Good evening, everyone. I'd like to bring this Galita City Council meeting to order of March 18, 2025. If you'll all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
At the end of the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Roll call of City Council.
Councilmember Reyes Martin.
Here.
Councilmember Kiriyako.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Mayor Protempor Casden.
Here.
And Mayor Perotti.
Here. Okay, at this time we'll have the introduction of our Spanish translator.
Tenemos interpretación al español disponible. Si alguien prefiere, aquí tengo auriculares. Good evening, we have interpretation into Spanish. If anybody prefers, I have headsets over here. Thank you, gracias.
Thank you, Viviana. Report from closed session, Mr. Rosen.
Thank you, Mayor, for the one closed session item that was read into the record at 4:30 PM. There is no reportable action this evening.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, at this time we'll have public forum. Anything that's not on our agenda this evening and pertains to our jurisdiction, now is your time to speak.
Yes, if any member of the Zoom wishes to speak to this item, please use the raised hand icon and I will call on you. Our first speaker is Ethan Woodall, and you'll have three minutes.
Recently, the city lost a lawsuit in regards to the Shelby project, and I had a couple of questions and things that I just wanted to ask in general, which is, how much did that cost the city? And why was it omitted from the housing element? Even after, as well, why did we continue on with litigation when the state AG's recommendation was to stand down because it was legally viable? Why was traffic on Cathedral Oaks used as an issue in not even putting it in the housing element when it was a viable site? And why does that relate to being any different than Cariel and Violet where we had a traffic vitality in 2020? In the honest to fairness, as Judge Andrew Lee said, it wasn't a bad faith measure taken by the city. But when you take it under the lens of looking at the housing element, and when we look at the Kenwood Village property, which unfortunately two of our members of our council have to recuse themselves on, you took at this, it looks like we're not adding equal consideration. One property got more consideration, one property got omitted that had a viable builder's remedy contract in place, albeit contestable, which turned out it wasn't contestable. We also, as a council, said that we couldn't fight housing element actions and certain things, but we did actually waste resources, money, and time of the city to fight another. And it just looks contradictory to me. This saddles the city with a legal bill and nothing to show for it. It further overloads the Overpass at Glen Annie. It adds more excessive housing and further exacerbates the problem of the large saddling of housing in the third district. This could have been taken into account with Kenwood. Now it'll just be added. So Kenwood could have had lower numbers if we would have accounted in the Shelby project being there, but now it's not, and now we've moved through. This also denies and flies in the face, the city as well had a previous business relationship with Kenneth Alker since 2012 as a business partner, third partner in Impulse Communications. This helps a developer get a number that would pencil out rather than lower a number of housing and density in housing in an area which had been better for residents. I just don't see it.
And you know that we can't respond?
I know that you can't respond.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, our first Zoom speaker is Lee Heller. Please unmute yourself, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Last night it was brought to my attention that you are going to be asked to approve a reduction of 13 parking spaces on Overpass Road, an already heavily overdrafted street with inadequate parking for multiple businesses and for a government agency that contracts with the city to provide services to your residents as well as to the rest of Southern Santa Barbara County. This afternoon, I spoke to the traffic engineer assigned to this project. Apparently, the request to remove spaces is in reference to a site plan for a future project, which has not only not had final approval, but for which work has not yet begun. This is in contrast to MTD, which did not come to you for parking space reductions until they were ready to make critical changes to their entrance and exit. The party in this case already has two parking entrances with sufficient visibility and access for both staff and the public, but wants to add a third entrance at the expense of 13 parking spaces. Your traffic engineer also told me that, to his knowledge, no parking demand study has been done. This is simply unacceptable, given the known challenges on Overpass Road. He also told me that the deadline for submitting comments to include in the staff report on this item was today at 4 o'clock, not March 28, the date listed on the memo that's been circulating. And he told me that the city has not posted barriers and signage around the proposed area until very recently. The problems on the street are widely known. People use it as long-term parking for old unused vehicles. Tierra Construction doesn't provide employee parking, so their staff take up most of the spaces. We've repeatedly requested enforcement for the long-term parking vehicles without success. As I understand, this issue is currently calendared for April 15. Given that, one, the date for public submissions to the staff report was incorrectly posted, two, no parking demand study appears to have been done, three, insufficient posting at the site is in place, and four, the project in question has not even broken ground, I urge you to postpone this item until these matters have been corrected, to ensure transparent inclusive processes that allow the community to understand what's being proposed, and for you to understand the very significant impacts that would involve. I would also suggest that instead of taking this issue up on April 15, your traffic staff be instructed to look at imposing timed parking on Overpass Road. And if you are short of staff to enforce, consider asking Animal Services, which is your contract agency at that location, to act as code enforcement officers for vehicles which overstay their limit. I have a feeling they'd be happy to oblige. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Robert Zada. You'll have three minutes, and please unmute yourself.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I ask permission, I know these are non items that we're supposed to be speaking about, but I have a previous engagement that I'm running off to, and I'm wondering if it's okay to speak about Old Town Galita now.
Is that okay? Yes, go ahead.
So, your report has put out, says that there are 1,894 less cars, daily cars, on Hollister, which is amazing that that many less cars are out there. That grants a reason to why things are running a little smoother than they would have been had those 1,894 cars been out there. But it also, you have 654 more cars driving on Armitos, Gaviota, and Mandarin, according to your study. And to me, those 654 cars running through the neighborhood streets would probably be more dangerous than having those cars out on Hollister. Your parking situation, to me, could have been solved by just having the 90-minute parking enforced, put in place and enforced, instead of having your backup parking. Also, on your report, you have it saying that there is, I want to say it was 50, 60% parking available, but you have it in front of the community center. You have that whole area from one driveway to the other saying that there's parking there, and there is no parking. It's all a red curb. But when you go by it, you guys actually have a 90-minute parking sign up there. I'm confused as to what is actually parking in Old Town Galita in front of the community center. I thank you for your time, and I will continue listening until I need to get out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next Zoom speaker, we have two more hands up. Sarah Aguilar, please unmute yourself and you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I ask permission, I know these are non items that we're supposed to be speaking about, but I have a previous engagement that I'm running off to, and I'm wondering if it's okay to speak about Old Town Galita now.
Is that okay? Yes, go ahead.
So, your report has put out, says that there are 1,894 less cars, daily cars, on Hollister, which is amazing that that many less cars are out there. That grants a reason to why things are running a little smoother than they would have been had those 1,894 cars been out there. But it also, you have 654 more cars driving on Armitos, Gaviota, and Mandarin, according to your study. And to me, those 654 cars running through the neighborhood streets would probably be more dangerous than having those cars out on Hollister. Your parking situation, to me, could have been solved by just having the 90-minute parking enforced, put in place and enforced, instead of having your backup parking. Also, on your report, you have it saying that there is, I want to say it was 50, 60% parking available, but you have it in front of the community center. You have that whole area from one driveway to the other saying that there's parking there, and there is no parking. It's all a red curb. But when you go by it, you guys actually have a 90-minute parking sign up there. I'm confused as to what is actually parking in Old Town Galita in front of the community center. I thank you for your time, and I will continue listening until I need to get out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next Zoom speaker, we have two more hands up. Sarah Aguilar, please unmute yourself and you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Sarah Aguilar, and I serve as the Animal Services Director for Santa Barbara County. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight about the proposed reduction in parking spaces and the impact on Overpass Road, and then also its potential impact on our community's access to essential services. As you know, our local animal shelter in Galita provides critical services, including pet adoption, lost and found assistance, and support for families in crisis. Many of the residents that we serve, including seniors, working families, and individuals with limited mobility, depend on convenient parking to access our shelter. A reduction in street parking could create unintended barriers for those who rely on us most, particularly those who cannot afford costly alternatives or have difficulty walking long distances. Additionally, our shelter volunteers and foster caregivers, who dedicate their time to improving the lives of animals, need safe and accessible parking. Limiting their access could reduce engagement, ultimately impacting the animals in our care and the services we provide to the community. I urge the council to consider these consequences and explore alternatives and conduct the appropriate assessment in order to balance community development and maintaining accessibility. Our goal is to serve Galita's residents and their pets effectively, but we can only do so if they can reach us. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next speaker is Karen Lovelace. Please unmute yourself and you'll have three minutes. Karen Lovelace, can you hear us? Trying to reset this really quick. Okay, Karen Lovelace, go ahead. Mayor, I'm not seeing a mic icon for Karen Lovelace, I don't think her computer has the ability to speak through Zoom. Karen, if you could please reboot your computer and come back. Karen, can you hear me? One more time. Okay, I think Karen's having some technical difficulties, and I cannot get her on the webinar, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
And that was our last speaker for public forum.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I'd just like to address the two speakers who spoke about the 13 parking spaces briefly. So, we'll look into it. I did hear about this this morning, but in preparing for the meeting tonight, just didn't have time to find out more about it, so I don't know a lot about it. But if it is true that it is scheduled to come before the council on April 15, there would be plenty of time for us to take comments from the public, and of course, members of the public can attend that meeting as well. But I'll look into it, and we'll get something back to council.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Yeah, I'd also like to get, in some way, answers to the points that were raised. I think they're about three or four points. It'd just be good to know what actually happened.
Okay, all right, okay, we'll close the public comment portion. And amendments or adjustments to our agenda, City Manager.
Madam Mayor, there's no amendments or adjustments to the agenda.
Okay, do you have a report for us?
I do, yes. I would like to, and we're getting the message out continually and as much as we can, but I'll take advantage of the opportunity now to remind the public that the Galita Valley Library will be closing soon. The last day before being closed for renovations is Sunday, March 30, so that'll be here before we know it, a couple weeks. And we are already working on the temporary library. So, Mr. Four showed me photos today of work happening inside, so all that work is being done, so the temporary library can be set up and open shortly thereafter. So, that's at, the temporary library again is at 6,500 Hollister Avenue, right behind City Hall here, and our schedule right now has us opening up the temporary library in approximately June sometime. So, a very precise schedule that we're working under, as everyone knows, and the goal is to close the library, move everything over, open the interim library, and then on the renovation of the main library, get in, get out, really the best way to do it, so we can get everything back and have a modern library. So, March 30 is when the library will be closing approximately. And that's the only announcement I have.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to consent calendar.
Yes, Madam Mayor. Item A1, approval of the City Council meeting minutes of March 4, 2025. Item A2, acceptance of the January 2025 check register. Item A3, acceptance of the December 2024 investment transaction report. Item A4, general plan, coastal land use plan 2024, progress report and finding the report is exempt under the California Environmental Quality Act. Item A5, Matilda Park improvements project, reject all bids and authorize call for bids. Item A6, Measure A, South Coast Regional Bicycle Pedestrian and Safe Road to School Program Cycle 6, grant program opportunity for various capital improvement program projects. Item A7, Professional Services Agreement with Unico Engineering, Inc., for construction management, inspection, materials testing, and public outreach services of the San Jose Creek Multipurpose Path Project. Item A8, Annual Comprehensive Financial Report and Single Audit Report for the year ended June 30, 2024. Item A9, Fiscal Year 2024-25, Second Quarter Financial Review. Item A10, Authorization to Purchase Three Vehicles for City Fleet. And Item A11, Acceptance of Donation of Funds from Yardi Systems, Inc. And I'll turn it over to the City Attorney for this one.
Thank you. So, Mayor, this evening on Item A11 on the consent calendar, that's the acceptance of donation of funds from Yardi Systems Incorporated. Staff has a minor amendment to the recommendation, so staff would recommend council consider A11 in substantially final form. There will actually be two donation agreements based on the funds contemplated, so they will have the same terms as listed in the agenda, but split based on the $20,000 donation on the July 4 Community Drone Show, and separately a donation of $20,000 to Galita Valley Public Library. So, we'd request the council consider the consent calendar as amended by that change.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember wish to pull any other item? Councilmember Mayor Protemp?
Yeah, I just want, A11. I wanted to, I think people would have a great fascination or a great excitement about hearing.
Do you want to make comments, or do you want to ask questions as well?
I see Kelly just ready to go, so.
Are there any other items that like to be?
I have questions about that one.
Okay, good. Okay, any other items wish to be pulled? Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Kelly Hoover.
Madam Mayor and council members, I want to give you an update. As you know, our community had a tradition, a longtime tradition of fireworks for 4th of July, a show at Gersh Park, and that went away around COVID for many reasons. It's a lot to take on, a show of that magnitude. It's expensive, it takes a lot of effort, and there were other issues surrounding it as well. So, for years, we've heard the community say, "We wish we had something for 4th of July that was so special." So, one idea that came, that we've been hearing about for years, is a drone show. And so, it is like a light show, and so we have a lot of momentum around this idea. We have a lot of community partners who've stepped forward and said they would fund a drone show and have committed to doing so, and we're, we've just got great momentum. We have a venue, Dos Publis High School, for 4th of July, and we have a very simple event planned for this first year. We are going to be coming back to you on April 1 to talk about the agreement with the vendor to make this happen, and also with the budget. So, we will have more specifics at that time, but I am here to answer any questions you have. But as you know, we don't allow fireworks, illegal fireworks, in Galita. So, to have an event that the community can go to that's free, and something that we can all do together, is a desire of our community.
Council have any questions?
No, I'm just very pleased. I had something, I think people taking their kids there, and people have missed that, and so I'm very happy to hear this.
Councilmember Reyes Martin?
I think you answered most of my questions with your comments, so thank you. I think we'll have more substantive, you know, questions and comments, it sounds, in April when that comes back. But I agree with the point about, you know, anything we can do to disincentivize the use of illegal fireworks is great. I think that we've seen those complaints increase in the last several years, and a non-fireworks show, I think, is a great alternative, and they've been increasingly popular. I recently saw one, and it was really great. So, I thank you for taking the initiative on that, and I look forward to hearing more about it in April.
Can't wait to tell you more about it, thank you.
Sure. Are there any other speakers for this item?
Yes, if anyone wishes to speak to this item, please use the raised hand icon and I will call on you. I am seeing none.
Okay, then I need a motion to pass the consent calendar.
I'll move approval as amended.
Good.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a roll call vote, please.
Yes, councilmembers, do please log in your votes. Councilmember Reyes Martin?
Aye.
Councilmember Kiriyako?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Protempor Casden?
Aye.
And Mayor Perotti?
Aye. Ayes have it. There you go, okay. Okay, moving on.
Yes, that brings us to Item B1, City Logo Tile, Kathy Allen, Supervising Planner.
Please join me in congratulating Kathy Allen, excuse me, on her retirement after 12 years of service to the City of Galita, for which we heartily thank her in her role as a supervising planner. And I'd like to just highlight a few things from her career with us, major projects that she worked on. Kathy saw the massive Village at Los Carneros project through the entire planning process, through entitlement and construction. She was also instrumental in setting up and supervising the permitting process for new cannabis uses following the adoption of Title 17. She managed the Galita Storage Project from inception through environmental review, permitting and construction. And of course, she also very ably supervised a team of current planners, and is known and respected for her depth of planning knowledge and expertise. But more than anything, in a department full of friendly people, Kathy is unquestionably one of the friendliest and nicest, always soft-spoken and gracious, with a welcoming smile to all she met. She has contributed hugely to our community and to our city. We will miss her, but we're very excited for her as she embarks on this next phase of her life.
I, when I heard this, I just went, "No, no." I'm happy for you, but I'm very sad. It's a loss for us, and I've always enjoyed your reports, and thank you. Thank you for your years of dedication. So, in special recognition of Kathy Allen, Supervising Planner, the City of Galita, in appreciation of your dedication, professionalism, and commitment to the City of Galita, from August 12, 2013, to March 28, 2025. Did you get a picture of all of us? I'm sure, and maybe, I don't know how they want to do this, Kelly will tell us.
Okay.
One, two, three.
just had a couple of thoughts I wanted to share. I was reflecting last night about my time with Guelita. And as I was thinking about everyone and all my time here and all the work, one word kept, stood out in my mind, which was gratitude. So I'd like to say that I feel so grateful to have had this opportunity to work with a great team of professionals, including staff and members of the development community, and to have such interesting and meaningful work. Also feel grateful to work with such a dedicated mayor and city council who spend so much time and care in making their decisions for the city. I feel grateful to be able to live and work in such a beautiful area with a community of people who also care deeply about the environment and the well-being of their neighbors. I feel grateful that I was able to raise my son, Gabe, who's here tonight. Gabe, in Guelita, where he has flourished and is now beginning his career in hospitality business. I feel grateful that I have been able to live in the same city as my sister Trish, who is also here tonight, and where we could enjoy hiking and biking the trails of Guelita and Santa Barbara. And also, we managed to spend quite a few days on the beaches here. I'll really miss everything about living and working in Guelita, and I hope to create a similar feeling when I relocate to San Diego area. And of course, I plan to visit Guelita and Santa Barbara as often as possible. So thank you all again for being here tonight and sharing this moment with me. Good night.
Do we have any speakers?
Yes, anyone on the Zoom webinar wishes to speak to this item, please use the raised hand icon and I will call on you. I do have Karen. Oh, never mind. I have no speakers for this item, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. All right.
Okay, that'll bring us.
Next item?
Item B2, that's the presentation from Santa Barbara Metropolitan Transit District.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. My name is David Anaya. I'm with the City of Guelita Public Works Department, Transportation and Development Engineering. I'm an associate engineer. I will be introducing the Santa Barbara Metropolitan Transit District update to the City of Guelita. So I'd like to introduce Jerry Estrada, General Manager, and Hillary Blackerby, Planning and Marketing Manager. And Nina Boelna, our Public Works Director, is also present for any questions.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hello.
Yeah, Mayor Perotti, councilmembers, thank you again for having us here tonight to give you an update on MTD. So let's go ahead and get started. Point that way, or a point. There it goes.
There you go.
Had to get the right button. Today, what I'd like to provide you an update on is, one, our ridership, give you an update on how things are progressing since the pandemic. And then also, just specifically, some action items from our recently updated strategic plan that I think have direct impact on Guelita and the services as a whole. That one. All right, I'll switch. All right, the ridership data. There's two really important points that we're trying to share with this particular graph. One is total ridership each fiscal year since the pandemic. You know, that is the baseline, 2018, 2019. MTD's ridership in the South Coast was 6.4 million rides that fiscal year. For a community this size, that's significant. Historically, MTD has had a great ridership on a per capita basis. That's one of the best, frankly, in the country when you look at it from that perspective. When the pandemic struck and people were sheltering in place, even at that point, you see in 2021, we still had 2.3 million rides. And we were actually limiting the number of riders onboard our vehicles to eight at that point, but we were boosting lines with our drivers. We didn't lay any one off. We just doubled up on service where we could to create the capacity that we felt we needed. But what we did do at that point was we suspended a number of services and we reduced services, frequency, span of service, et cetera. We really focused our resources where we felt the essential workers were. And since that time, we've been trying to restore service as best we can with the resources that we have. So you've seen ridership increased to 4.6 million as of last June on a per revenue hour basis. You see, it was 29.3 passengers per hour pre-pandemic. Now we're at 27.3. I feel pretty good about those numbers. I think it makes us feel that we have selected the right services to put our resources into. But even at this point, we haven't restored all the services, and we probably will not be able to. And we'll get into that a little bit more throughout the presentation. There we go. Action items. First one I wanted to talk about was fleet facilities and technology. Two items specifically, one, the first one about our fleet. The innovative clean transit rule that the State of California passed mandates that public transit operators like MTD convert their fleet to zero emission by 2040. Our board has set a goal to try and achieve that earlier. And, you know, we're really happy with the progress we made. And on the next slide, I'll review that for you. The second action item under fleet facilities and technology I'd like to discuss today is our Terminal 2 Operations and Maintenance Facility, which is located on Overpass Road. So the fleet. What you see there are pictures of our newest zero emission bus. Those are new flyers. We have nine of them in our fleet. Our active fleet currently is about 100 buses at this point, of which 23 are zero emission. So we're really proud of that. I think for an agency our size, we're out ahead of most. We also have 17 hybrids, so that's 40% of our fleet that's alternative fuel at this point. And as you can see, we also travel over 2 million miles a year. And we have about 72 vehicles in peak operation. The second project that I wanted to discuss was our Terminal 2, what we call Phase 1. The Terminal 2 project is on Overpass Road here in Guelita. Our first terminal is downtown Santa Barbara. And that's our, where all of our systems and everything else is operated out of. With Guelita, this site used to be our primary site many years ago, but we consolidated down in Santa Barbara. We're really outgrowing that site, and we needed to recommission this site. We expect construction to be completed this month, by the end of the month. So we're excited to begin moving back into the site, hopefully by the summer. It'll be a minimal, initially it'll be minimal, about maybe 10 buses. All of our employees will be parked on site, you know, at that site. I wanted to make sure it was clear about that with Overpass Road. So, all right, so that's what it looked like before we started the project of recommissioning. If you made a right, if you're coming down Patterson, made a right onto Overpass, West Semina Gardens to your right, you're looking straight ahead, you would have seen this facility. You would have seen that overhead shot as the old canopies and building. This was probably built back in the 70s. And that's what it looks like today. And we're really happy with the improvements. The focus of the recommissioning was really to make the site safe and secure. So we're really focused on the perimeter of the project, all new fencing, landscaping. We widened the apron for the buses. And we also put in a new repaired bus wash and a fuel tank to get started at that particular site. As you come around the turn on Overpass, there was no sidewalk, just the old brick wall. And that's what it looks like today. Now there's a sidewalk that continues all the way down the street. There's a new exit there to improve circulation for us. And we're really, again, really pleased with the way it looks. I think it's a really nice improvement for the neighborhood. Now, Phase 2, we were fortunate to be awarded significant grant funding from the State of California for the second phase of this, which is essentially to take out, replace all the canopies as well as the old building. It's a 6,000 square foot building, which was used for operations and maintenance, including a couple of garages. We're going to replace it with a 10,000 square foot building. Those plans will be submitted to the city pretty soon. And we're hoping that maybe by, you know, the middle of 2026, we'll be able to start construction. It's a really, it's a major project for us, but it's a necessary project for us. So when you, this is, this gives you an overview of what it looks like. As I mentioned, we've handled the perimeter of the site already. The blue areas are the canopies that will be replaced. We'll also have a photovoltaic system there. The orange is the building that'll be knocked, knocked down, replaced. And with the garages, we'll be able to service our 60-foot Artix that are used out at UCSB. In total, what we've estimated is that 25% of our fleet, about 25 vehicles, ultimately will be able to be operated out of this site. And that will reduce our deadhead by a third, reducing our greenhouse emissions pretty significantly. And what deadhead is, is essentially that travel period where you're not picking up passengers back to a garage. So not having everything at downtown, we have quite a bit of service at UCSB out here in Guelita as well. So this site is really going to be beneficial to the South Coast. The next slide has to do with service, operations, planning, customers, the customer experience. And I just wanted to talk about a few action items there. And it's really just an emphasis that our team, really led by Hillary Blackerby, our Planning and Marketing Manager, works closely with your staff, as well as those at the City of Santa Barbara, the county, carpentry, all the local jurisdictions, to really look at the land use plans. We also want to look at all the demographics to see how the communities change so that we can plan our services accordingly going forward, as best we can with the resources we have. And that gives us the opportunity to work together to improve bus stops. What you see down there, some of the pictures, our bus stop improvements in partnership with the City of Santa Barbara, for example, new shelters, that sort of thing. We also increased the capacity for bikes on our entire fleet from two to three last year, so really happy with that. We're also hopeful to do some traffic signal priority projects in the South Coast, which will help us really become more efficient with our services, which is critical. Couple of improvements from last August that I wanted to discuss. Every August is when we usually implement new service changes, trying to do them once a year. And two that I think are, you know, relevant here in Guelita. One was the 15X. This is service that runs from Isla Vista to Santa Barbara City College. It provides direct access for the students that live there, which really helps, I think, with circulation within the City of Guelita. And when we had, when the pandemic struck, we had to make a number of cuts and reductions, including span of service to this line and others, frequency, et cetera. And we've been restoring as best we can, again, with the resources. And my last slide's going to really touch on the most important resource that we're, that we have. But what we've been able to do as of last August was increase the span of service from 6:00 PM to 9:35. And as a result, ridership has increased by 18.6% so far. So we're really pleased with that change. Also, the on-time performance has improved a nine and a half percent. And the next slide is also the Isla Vista Shuttle. With the, with the change, we improved the frequency back to 20 minutes, restoring it to what it used to be. And you've seen a 93.5% increase in ridership as a result, and a 24% increase in on-time performance. And what I get across the South Coast over and over is requests for more service. It's a great thing. I love getting the requests. It doesn't feel good when we can't always, you know, essentially deliver on that. And the next item I wanted to talk about is the wave, on-demand microtrans service, something we've been discussing for a long time. I know. It's been difficult. And my last slide is really going to, I think, bring it home. For us, the challenge has been essentially picking what priorities we have for where to put the resources we have. And we've been trying to restore as much as we can key services throughout the South County, like as you saw, the Isla Vista service, et cetera, in the 15X. The on-demand service, we have funding for a pilot. And we're looking forward to launching that next month in April, probably by the end of the month. It's all dependent at this point on the availability of bus operators. Do we have enough bus operators to reliably put that service out? So we're talking about a soft launch in April to start testing that service. It's been a long time coming. I can't wait for it to get started, frankly. But really, that's been the big issue for us with that particular service. Just a reminder of where it's intended to serve, its geofenced areas, the people will be able to go, go to. And that really, for us, I want to be clear, on-demand service is not a replacement for good fixed route service. That's really the key. We have a lot of good fixed route service, I believe, on the South Coast. What on-demand does is help us fill some gaps, help us get people more directly, maybe directly where they want to go without having to transfer, that sort of thing. So we think it's important to test the service in Guelita first, but also we have plans to do some carpentry in Santa Barbara as well. Last couple of slides coming up. Can't talk about transit if you're not talking about the fiscal cliff. And if, maybe you've heard of that. For a lot of transit operators, especially in California, or just in the country, that had high ridership and had a high fare box ratio, in other words, the fares covered a significant percentage of your operating expenses, it's been difficult. We've been very dependent, and we still are, on COVID funds to get us through. And right now, we have sufficient COVID funding to get us through 2028. But we have a projected deficit currently for this year of about 4 million out of a operating budget of 30. So it's significant. So while there are requests for more and more services, I have to explain that we're trying to restore the services. We want to test markets like this one for on-demand. So when our board has to make some difficult decisions down the line, if we're unable to fill that, or cover the cliff with new revenue, that we're able to consider those services as well for that time. Recently, the board adopted a new fare policy that'll go into effect in August. It was the first time MTD has raised fares since 2009, the Great Recession. So it's been 16 years since we raised it. We don't do it very often. We do what we can with the resources that we have. And we've made it this far. We hope to make it to 2028. But that's the first step, is to try and close that, the fiscal cliff, was fares. It won't be enough, frankly. We're going to have to do more. We're working closely with the state in Sacramento. I hope there's a Transit Transformation Task Force that's working in Sacramento to try and address the issue. There is a plan that they're going to need to come up with, essentially deliver to legislature in October of this year. So we'll see what comes of that. The bottom line for us, though, and one of the challenges of restoring the service has been workforce, not just recruitment, but retention. And, you know, the challenge is, like a lot of businesses, we lost a lot of folks. People chose, you know, didn't come back to the workplace. For MTD, it's been a great place to work. I just wanted to highlight this morning, we acknowledged or recognized three employees who met their 50th work anniversary. That was 50.
That's incredible.
Yes, three of them. You know, they were calling me rookie. I've been there 30, 35 years. Yeah, but, and there's a few more right behind them. But we're going to continue to have more and more retirements. So we've got to continue to hire, even though we know we have a fiscal cliff issue coming. Next slide. So this is my last slide, and it kind of, really, I think, brings the issue home for MTD. We've got more, requests for more services. We got to be careful about funding in the long run, and we have to decide where those resources go. The top half of this graph shows you the number of bus operators we will, we were able to hire in each of the last five fiscal years. The bottom shows you the net effect. In other words, from the baseline of the pandemic, how many FTEs did we have for bus operators? So for example, in 2020, we hired four, but we were down 16 drivers almost immediately. We lost 10% of our workforce almost immediately. And it was a lot of folks just deciding, I don't want to do this, I'm going to retire, that sort of thing. Even of the 45 we've hired, we've managed to retain 87%. Nevertheless, when you go down to the end, we are down 24% in the number of drivers that we had pre-pandemic, so negative 38. So even though we hired 28 last fiscal year, we only netted eight. And that's kind of been the challenge. You probably hear that from other businesses as well. But the good news is, we've seen a turn. We've seen more and more people applying for work again, wanting to be bus operators. We have a great wage, great benefits. It's a good place to work. So I'm feeling better about our prospects of being able to hire enough people to put this service out there, but we need a little more patience as we hire up and we backfill for anyone else who decides to retire over the next year. So that's been the biggest challenge. Those are some of the services that I think, and some of the main issues that I think affect Guelita from our service. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Councilmember Kiriyako?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I still see you.
I see you too.
Thanks to your team for being here. A few questions, but before the questions, a comment. I really want to compliment you on how you chose to select the microtransit area. When I think about the fact that our Zone 4 for our library serves a lot of folks both inside the city and outside the city, one of the major complaints that we hear a lot is that it's really difficult for people in Isla Vista to get to the Guelita Library. Given the fact that we're getting ready to shutter the Guelita Library and have it be relocated for a while to 6500 Hollister, I was really pleased to see that that is in one of your microtransit zones, that facility. But also, that all the folks north of freeway that are so used to being able to walk to the Guelita Library that live in District 1 will at least have the ability to get into the wave and take that. And so that's, that provides at least to me some comfort, that a lot of folks that are used to having that convenient, welcoming library will at least be able to get there without having to rely on a car. So I just really want to compliment you for that. A few, a few other things. How are things going with accessibility to things like bus passes and being able to pay with a credit card on the bus? I've taken the bus a few times recently, and some of the, some of the lines in operation, you can pay with a credit, it seems like you can pay with a credit card now. Some of them don't seem like they're quite ready yet. How's that coming?
Yeah, you know, it's coming along pretty well. We, I don't think we're 100% there. We had some issues on the technology side, but we're working through those with the vendor. And I'm optimistic that we're going to have the entire fleet functioning in a way that we're really satisfied with, pretty soon, the next few months at least. But overall, it's been a great response. And it's something I should have touched on earlier when I talked about the fares. One of the new features we put out is that TAP program. And when you look at our fares, the passes are discounted. And one of the issues that we've experienced, it always didn't sit well with me, was that you had to pay, you paid less for a monthly pass, which is great. But if you couldn't afford to do that, you're paying But if you couldn't afford to do that, you're paying the cash fare, which was much higher. And that was always difficult to accept. With the TAP program, we're able to address that for the first time because that cap can be shared with those that are paying as they go for the first time. So we're really, we really want to see that technology take off. And so far, it's been a good response.
Thank you. I also want to say thank you for the sidewalk over by Terminal 2, over there on Overpass. I know so many people, especially when I used to live over by there at Sumida Gardens, so many people would have to walk in the street. And they're walking in between cars. And it's just, it's a lot safer over there now, so thank you. And as the son of a former mechanic that worked at Terminal 2, I wanted to ask, can you talk a little bit about having that facility, once it's fully online, what will that mean for service in different parts of Galita, Old Town Galita, that, you know, if the line, you know, if you have a major line, like, you know, like the 6 or the 11 or something that goes down, you know, every minute really counts when those lines are out of service. And a lot of people are relying on that to get home, get home after work, to get to work. So could you just talk a little bit about what it'll mean to have that facility really going up and running?
Sure. I think from the, thank you for that question. I think from the customer's perspective, it's going to be, it's really important. Because I mentioned earlier the deadhead. And that's really what we're talking, I'm also thinking about what you're referring to, which is the response time. And the ability to get a vehicle out there if necessary or get maintenance crew out there to get a vehicle off the street, off the road, if it's down in a road call situation, will be just that much quicker by having that second facility out here in Galita. And it's, I can't say enough how important that site is to MTD and its future. We really need that site. We need to be, because of the amount of service that's in, you know, in Galita, Old Town, having a facility so close is really critical. And it'll actually create a lot of, relieve a lot of pressure on our Terminal 1 site in Santa Barbara as well.
Okay. And then my last question. On-time service in Old Town Galita, obviously, there's a lot of construction right now. You've got, you know, you're building a new, a couple of new roundabouts on Hollister. You have a bridge being rebuilt and replaced. And there's been some concessions made to make it so that buses at Kellogg and Kenman can get in and out of there more easily. What are you seeing in terms of on-time performance in that part of the corridor? Are you having major impacts? Are buses falling way behind? Or are you meeting your standards?
We are meeting our standards. I mean, it's actually our quarterly, when you look at our quarterly reports and look at our on-time performance across the entire South Coast, but even through there, all of our lines, as far as I can recall, are meeting the standards that we have for it at this point.
Okay. Thank you. That's all my questions.
Councilmember, or Mayor Protem Kasdan. I'll get it.
Hi.
Hi.
Nice to see you.
I see you, too.
So a couple of things. First, we had previously, earlier, you know, a couple of months ago, communicated about bus passes and, because one of them was down, the one that we usually use. And I appreciate the responses that I got. It highlighted to me how I didn't know about all the opportunities that were available to get those passes. And now that Kelly is not in the room, you know, maybe there's a way we can promote or get that information out available. I know somebody in my district that had talked about that she had had a traumatic brain injury and was unable to drive and, but believed that she had to go, I forgot where she thought she had to go, if it was UCSB or the community center. But it was a challenge for her and knowing she could get it through the mail or something like that. So if there's some way at some point that we can support you in getting the information out, I, you know, I am hopeful I can volunteer, Kelly.
We'll definitely take that back, you know, and do what we can. We have a great working relationship with your staff and look forward to doing more.
Yeah, that would be great. Let me, another one, actually, the WAVE. The WAVE, I think, you know, does have exciting possibilities. But one thing, you know, and especially you had highlighted the, that you have future budget challenges. And one thing that struck me is if the WAVE is essentially, if everyone, high income and low income are paying the same freight, I guess what I'd be worried about, and you can comment, is that we're essentially cannibalizing Uber and taxis, that people who otherwise would have taken those will just now take the WAVE. And so we're not actually reducing overall some of those, those serve, you know, the vehicles out there. We're just shifting it to a lower cost one for the consumer as opposed to that we have it, you know, a higher rate for people, for sort of ordinary people, and those with lower incomes have some sort of pass or some sort of subsidy for it.
Yeah, I think, you know, yeah, happy to respond. I think, you know, anytime we can use the resources we have, taxpayer, you know, funds, to provide a cost-effective service to the community, I think that's exactly what they would want us to do. And I think that's what we're attempting to do. Really important with our vehicles is they're all ADA accessible. Our vans will have wheelchair ramps, so anyone and everyone can use them. Not sure Uber, Lyft can make that claim. So it really improves accessibility to everyone in those zones. And we're proud of that, I think, in public transit. The key for us, though, and to your point, is to not do anything to harm our fixed route services. You know, those are first and foremost the most effective way for us to carry people. But we think where this can really fill that, those gaps, we should try. And I think there's plenty of room for us and the private sector to work together to provide those options. At least, we're going to try.
Yeah, I mean, I guess what a thing I was trying to get at is that for those people who are now relying on Uber and taxis and so forth like that, our goal, I would think, is not simply to replace that with this service because it's relatively similar as a service, except it's publicly available. And, you know, in a sense, we want to, I think, we would want to think about, what is our ultimate goal with it? Is it to help those who are least able to afford the costs of some of those microunit services, you know, by providing a public opportunity? You know, you don't have to answer. I just thought I, you can if you want. But I just to kind of give that, give some thought to that, especially given it's likely to be expensive.
Yeah, we will absolutely give that some thought. Thank you for the feedback.
I had a little more. I guess I, so along Hollister, for instance, in West Galita, people have heard me talk about this before. There are going to be eyes rolling back in their heads. But there's a couple of bus stops along Hollister there where it's, there's no cross street or no, neither a stoplight nor a hawk sort of thing. And this is on the north side of the street I'm thinking of especially. So on the north side of the street, you've got bus stops. And so any kids, first of all, any kids going to the high school have to run across the street to get to their bus stop, that Dos Pueblos. And then, second, they don't have any lights. There's no streetlights. There's about two or three of them. And so if somebody is taking the bus and getting off there at night, if they're a senior, if they are disabled, if they took a bus because they've been drinking, they have to navigate across Hollister, that's four lanes, at night, in the dark. And at that time, cars are moving awfully fast. And so I know this is a joint sort of thing. It's not your responsibility alone in any fashion. So I guess, but I guess I want to see some additional effort or coordination to, with the city. And I just chose, by the way, two spots that, because I live near there. But I, there may be others. I guess, let me ask you this. Have you guys done some sort of survey or participated in something to see what sites throughout the city are sort of the more of concern? And, you know, have a list of things we need to do on that account?
I'd say, you know, we have a list of probably of improvements that we would make that are within our control. You know, shelters, benches, that sort of thing. But we also, I think, to your point, it's critical that we work closely with the local jurisdictions and public works departments who have, you know, we don't have control of the right-of-way, where we can work together to coordinate that sort of effort, to, to exactly your point and address it. So I think we'd be happy to do that, you know. Hillary is our planning marketing manager. She works closely with your staff. And we can definitely take a look at Hollister or any other location.
Yeah, because I, you know, where there was something that looks like a dangerous situation, and, you know, we did have a fatality there on that area only a little over a year ago. Because, but, so I don't want to belabor it, but I do think it's something we need to make an effort at getting at soon. And I believe it's in our staff's work plan. So they're aware and, okay, one last sort of thing. Well, one and a half, let's say. We have a bunch of new housing coming, as you know. And one of the things I've wondered about is when we, I guess the question is, how do you figure out routes and timing and so forth? And SB CAG gathered data associated by using phone, tracking phones and so forth. Is there a way, you know, some, using some sort of linear programming or, you know, something or other where you're able to optimize the sites and the timing and all that kind of thing?
Yeah, we have a really good team. Our planning department, our, just our operations department, you know, it's made up of, you know, well over 100 employees, many of which actually grew up here and know the community really well. But yes, we do look at all the data. You know, we're, obviously, we're closely with SB CAG as well to try to identify what type of changes do we need to make every year? So every year, we go through the service planning process and we get feedback from the community if there's something like that. But also, as I mentioned earlier, our planning team works closely with the local jurisdictions to look at the land use. What's, what's in the pipeline? What developments are planned? And then it's really a question, is it being built close to one of our existing routes? Where we have capacity? Do we need to add frequency? If it's not, then that could be a little bit more challenging if you're extending into an area where there isn't those services, which I think is true for any infrastructure, but similar for public transit. But we can definitely look at, you know, continue to look at all the data. And if there's something that we would think needs to be addressed or modified, we'd absolutely do it.
Is there a way, has the city ever approached you guys as saying, we have particular intersections or we have areas that are a challenge for us? And to try and encourage additional more frequency or something like that for buses to alleviate some of the traffic?
I know, from a staff perspective, you know, we absolutely work closely. Again, and there's been some conversations, I think, in general. But when you go through the process, the community definitely speaks up. Annually, we reach out, do outreach. We did our short-range transit plan a few years ago. And I think we had nearly 1,000 responses from throughout the entire county about everything MTD, including any suggestions about, you know, routing or services at intersections, that sort of thing as well.
Well, I'm thinking of staff. Does staff communicate with you about these things and try and, you know, where we know we have a real issue, we have, you know, I could list some locations where having people take advantage of buses more would be wonderful.
Yeah, Mayor, and Mayor Protem Pre. Yes, I mean, we're in touch. And so when it comes to things like housing, obviously, it's a long lead time. And so we know something's coming and we can see that pop up. When it comes to concerns about pedestrian safety or any kind of sort of circulation or traffic flow, obviously, if something pops up, we work together. We've talked about issues around Dos Pueblos High School before, for example, right? It's a flood of people. As you know, as a parent, it's a flood of people that drop off, a flood of people that pick up. And we send a lot of buses through there. And so talking about those kinds of things. So I can't think of a specific thing where there was, you know, I mean, and we also work closely with your staff who helps get our messaging out. And so Kelly, I don't think you're giving her any work she's not already doing in the sense that we work together on that. Can't think of a specific thing where there was a problem and we solved it. But I think, you know, it definitely, it helps a lot of aspects of the city to get more people on the bus. And we do what we can on our end with service. And they do what you can on your end with, you know, the right-of-way and the public work side of things and planning as well.
One last question. Is there, do people, is there an app where you can download and see where the bus is? And you, yeah, and they know the bus is on its way or the bus has already left and that sort of thing?
Go ahead.
Yes, we do have one that's, if you look it up in the App Store or Play Store, it's called SBMTD Bus Tracker. But also, all of our real-time information is available in Google Maps and the transit app. So you can find out, you know, how many minutes away your bus is. There's also a texting feature. At every bus, there's a sign, a green and white sign. And you just send a, basically, the bus stop number to a five-digit code. And it writes right back to you and says it's coming in seven minutes or whatever. So we have several different ways to find that information.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Reyes Martine.
Thank you. And thank you for the presentation and a lot of really great information. I had just a couple of quick questions. I'm sorry if I missed it, but on the WAVE, did you share the start date for that?
We are aiming for the end of April.
End of April. That's really exciting. I know a lot of residents, especially seniors in my district in that microzone, were really excited about it when they first heard about it. So I know that will be really helpful, especially for accessibility issues for a lot of those seniors.
And to be clear, it'll be a very soft launch. You're so dependent on bus operator numbers, but yes.
Understood. But I'm excited to see that, the progress on that. And then my other question was related to Terminal 2. Will there be EV charging at that spot? And not for the public, but for your vehicles?
Yes, we are currently working with SoCal Edison to plan that out. We'll start with our, you know, some of our diesel buses, just to get started, 8 to 10. But a part of Phase 2 is to, you know, build the infrastructure so we can have the chargers out there as well.
That's good to know, actually. And at our previous council meeting, we were talking about emergency kind of planning. And I know one of the things that staff is doing is kind of this regional inventory of where EV charging is available. And it'd be great for you all to be part of that kind of internal staff list.
Happy to partner.
Thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
What I hope is one last question. The express buses, you know, between Galita and downtown Santa Barbara, I know are popular and one of my favorite. So I didn't know if there's any, you know, I know, I appreciated your honesty in terms of what you all are facing in terms of choices about route times and adding service back. But is there any update on either the 12X or 24X in terms of any changes?
We're currently, our draft service plan was approved to go out to the public today with the board. And we're looking at one evening trip, you know, for the 24X. But nothing in the morning at this point. But we're taking all that feedback. And it's something we would definitely take a look at for next year, again, if we have the resources are available.
Great, thank you. And yes, just my comment, like, if you haven't ridden MTD in a while, you know, you can tap your credit card. And it's a really great experience if you haven't been in a while. So thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I just want to make a couple of comments. And first of all, just thank you. Thank you for your, I have the, I'm fortunate to be able to sit on the MTD Board. And I've done it for several years now. And it's a very well-run. And just hearing those three gentlemen this morning expressing how it's the family and you all work together. And I think that's so important in any organization. And, you know, obviously, it says something if they've been there 50 years. And you have a few more coming up for retirement, right? So I think we owe a lot to you and how you run things. And I thank you. And I think this is timely that we had this discussion tonight. I know we tried getting it earlier and we canceled. And anyway, it didn't work out. So, but I think it's timely that we have this discussion this evening. And thank you for that. I just wanted to comment on the WAVE to answer Mayor Protem Kasdan's comment about Uber versus the WAVE. I have a feeling, I'm, I can't, I have nothing to base this on, but I have a feeling that maybe seniors might feel more comfortable with, instead of getting in a car with someone they absolutely don't know, they're getting into a bus, you know, with professional people that are certified, not that Uber are not. But in their mind, it might seem safer to them. So I think that might be a possibility. Do you have a comment on that?
Yeah, just to clarify, I wasn't thinking it wasn't going to be popular.
No, 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 I know. But I think that's the difference.
I think it'll be super popular and it's, you know, how do you target it in a sense?
And will the, the van for the wave be at Earth Day? Did you want to talk about Earth Day at all?
You know, we're looking forward to Earth Day. We, the board did approve today in partnership with SB CAG to make it free fare for that weekend. So that, that's probably the big announcement for, for Earth Day. And we're, you know, really excited to be able to do that for the community. And yeah, hopefully it's something we can continue to do.
Opportunity for everybody to give it a try if they haven't ridden the bus in a while. Do we have any public speakers?
Yes, if any member of the public on the Zoom webinar wishes to speak to this item, please use the raised hand icon and I will call on you. Do you have Gemma Jimenez? Please unmute yourself, you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Hema. I am an education encouragement coordinator for Mu, Santa Barbara County, and I wanted to thank you for the presentation. Mu, Santa Barbara County supports the usage of public transportation. We encourage folks and we educate community members on all mobility access in the Santa Barbara County. There are many benefits to using public transportation that have been mentioned in the presentation. And as a public transit writer myself, I am happy to hear MTD working on reliability, connectivity and affordability. I believe the wave program will further, furtheren people's options and I'm also excited to test it out myself. And I also know that funding and planning is not the easiest. And so I really appreciate that portion of the presentation. But as mentioned in the presentation, you know, MTD has one of the highest riderships and it was really great to know that because knowing that, you know, that it's, it's an information, important data to know, you know, statewide, right? And maybe nationwide. And so that I feel like can be used as an example and leverage on why state and regional funding are crucial. I believe everyone should be supporting public transportation, community members, but also all MTD staff and county and citywide, I believe it should be supported. So I really appreciate your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I have, I have no more speakers.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. Thank you so much. And Ms. Hillary Blackerbeath, thank you for being here and answering questions.
Thank you.
Bye bye. Okay, we're going to take a real quick five minute break. Let's bring this, let's bring this meeting back to order. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
That will be.
Okay.
And that will be item C1 Hollister Avenue Old Town Interim Striping Project Update.
Okay, who's going to start us off?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers.
Hi.
Hi. My name is Melissa Angeles and I am the project manager for the Hollister Avenue Interim Striping Project and Project Connect. Presenting with me this evening are Derek Rapp, the city's contract traffic engineer, and Shannon Kern, Assistant to the City Manager. The Public Works Director Nina Buellma and Finance Director Luke Rio are also available for questions. Tonight, we will be providing an update on the Hollister Avenue Interim Striping Project and will give a brief background on the project, discuss the improvements, public outreach, project approach, project goals, evaluation of results, key economic observations, and the next steps. In 2018, the Complete Streets Corridor Project was approved by the City Council. Over the course of 18 months, extensive public outreach efforts were conducted, which included public surveys, meetings, workshops, and a walking and biking tour. Feedback gathered from the community helped shape the street design concepts aimed at providing multimodal access and parking efficiency, ultimately guiding the development of the Hollister Avenue Old Town Interim Striping Project, which was approved by the City Council in 2021 and completed in July 2024. The Interim Striping Project was constructed as a change order to Project Connect. The project utilized rubberized asphalt, an environmentally friendly material made from recycled tires, which not only contributed to sustainability, but also resulted in a smoother ride and a significant noise reduction. Pre-paving noise levels were measured at 83 decibels, which can be compared to having a conversation in a busy restaurant with background music, while post-paving levels dropped to 58 decibels, which can be compared to having a conversation in a quiet office. Additionally, the project enhanced visibility of roadway markings, crosswalks, and signage. New intelligent transportation systems were also installed at traffic signals, enabling real time monitoring of traffic conditions and allowing staff to adjust signal timing The project included community stakeholder involvement and public outreach. Nine community meetings were held between 2018 and 2024. When the project was incorporated as a change order to Project Connect, outreach efforts were managed by the Project Connect Outreach Team. The outreach included visits, in-person visits to over 100 Old Town businesses, postcard mailers to over 2,000 parcels, articles in the Monarch Press, media releases, personalized outreach to the Santa Barbara Metropolitan Transit District, Galita Unified School District, Galita Community Center, Santa Barbara South Coast Chamber of Commerce, Greater Santa Barbara Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, and property managers of impacted multifamily residential properties. The dedicated project webpage was regularly updated with construction details. Additionally, a dedicated project phone number and email were used to field inquiries. Between May and November 2024, the city received 121 public inquiries regarding the project. Of these, 75 expressed concerns, primarily about the back-end angled parking and traffic impacts. 10 inquiries were compliments, appreciating the safety improvements, while the remaining inquiries consisted of general questions. Interest peaked in July with an average of 19 inquiries per week, but declined afterward with only seven inquiries recorded between November 2024 and February 2025. I will now hand the presentation over to Mr. Rapp. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Madam Mayor, members of council, I'm here to talk a little bit more about the details, some of the data that we collected within the project area, which is depicted on the, on the screen here. Just wanted to orient everybody to the area that we're studying, which is Old Town Hollister Avenue between Fairview and Kinman Avenue, outlined in the red in the, in the picture on the screen. Next slide. As far as the project approach, the Old Town Interim Striping Project was, was designed to use lower cost materials. That means no concrete improvements. Those would be easier to modify and study and, and tweak as things went on. We would then study, collect traffic, parking and collision data, which is what we're here today to review with you. We can then analyze that information, compare it to pre-project conditions, and make refinements based on that data as well as any feedback that we've received from the public. We can then further evaluate, determine the, the benefits of the project and, and hopefully at, at some point, reach consensus that we've, we've struck the right balance and then pursue funding for a permanent streetscape project for Old Town. Just to reorient you all with the project, the original project goals that were established, and many of these, most of these were established as part of the Complete Streets Project, which was the predecessor to the Interim Striping Project. Number one was to increase parking spaces for Old Town businesses and as well as availability, reducing traffic speeds on Hollister, reduction in collisions on Hollister. I think previous presentations has, had shown that we had very high collision rates on, in Old Town Hollister. And to improve conditions for bikes and pedestrians, because it's not just drivers that shop and enjoy Old Town, it's also bicyclists and pedestrians. And to do all of these things while maintaining traffic flow in Hollister. It's very important that we strike an appropriate balance between traffic flow as well as accommodation of all these other aspects. So the first data point is traffic volume comparisons on Hollister Avenue. The upper line, the orange line, is the pre-project or 2022, it was taken in October of 2022, which was about 18,500 cars per day on Hollister. We also collected data in November and December of 2024, as well as in January of 2025. And those are the three data points in blue below that you can see on that graph. The average of those three data points is about 16,500 cars per day. So roughly, you know, in rough numbers, about 2,000 cars a day less, which results in about an average of 10 mile, or 10% reduction in traffic. If you all remember our, our discussions pre-project, we were projecting up to a 15% reduction of traffic on Hollister as a result of the changes, primarily due to the number, about a third of traffic, which was considered cut through traffic on, on Old Town Hollister. Those folks that were using Old Town Hollister to get from, from one point to another point outside of Old Town. And based on that data and looking at some travel patterns, we, we thought perhaps up to 15% reduction would be realized. The data right now bears out that, that was, we overestimated a little bit and it's only about 10% reduction at this point. This next slide is a depiction of the parallel streets or the surrounding streets in, in Old Town around Hollister, Armidos and Gato to the north, Gaviota to the south, and obviously Mandarin to the north as well. So you can see increases in most of the, on most of those streets, Armidos, Gaviota, and Mandarin, slight reduction in traffic on Gato. All of these, while, while seeing increases, not, no way of, of knowing with the data that we collected whether it's attributable to cut through traffic or some other, some other reason. Anecdotally, Armidos also saw the adding or the completion of the park on Armidos, which could contribute to some additional traffic. Overall though, all traffic is, is under the threshold of what's considered livable for neighborhoods, which is around 1,500 cars per day. Next slide. This is a comparison of pre and post parking spaces. You can see on the north side, we are adding quite a few parking spaces due to the back end angled parking. Each of these is listed by block. On the south side, some blocks had, had some, some increases and some had some decreases, but overall there was no net change in parking on the south side. Study, which was done, which is sort of the famous Walker Study from 2012, that analyzed parking conditions in Old Town. The colors represent different levels of parking occupancy. The upper, the upper chart is the 2012 data, where you can see the, the red colors is the 90% or higher occupancy, and contrasted with the purple colors, which is under 15% of occupancy. If you compare that to the January 2025 data, we're seeing big swings in parking occupancy, particularly on the north side toward the east of the, of the, of the area between, say, Teca Lotte and Kinman. Previously, it was around 90%, now it's under 50, under 50%. That change exceeds, exceeds being explained by just the increase in amount of parking supply. There's been a lot of changes in Old Town since 2012, including 90-minute parking, which creates, which generates quite a bit of turnover. Three public lots in Old Town, which is shown, it's a little bit difficult to see on this, on the lower graphic, one at Orange, one at the Community West Bank, and then the, the recently added Carson Street Lot, for a total of 70 spaces. We also added, as part of this project, 19 spaces on Hollister. There's been a change in the configuration of the businesses. One, one notable standout, I would say, shows the increase in occupancy is on the south side near Orange, where the Old Town Coffee Shop is. There's been a huge increase in parking occupancy there. So different mix of businesses can create different parking situations. There's a lot of moving parts here, and again, this is a snapshot in time. Will be interesting to see how this pattern continues over time. As far as parking goes, there's been a lot of discussion about public awareness of the parking lots. We just wanted to take a few screenshots of the signs showing directions to public parking lots in Old Town. I know that there's more efforts underway to do more of a customized wayfinding program for Old Town, something that's more themed for Old Town and less generic. Next, we have traffic speeds. On the left, in, in the orange, is the 2022 speed profile, where the 85th percentile, or the speed that 85% of traffic was traveling at or below, was just over 31 miles per hour, contrasted with the average of the 2024 and 2025 data, dropping about 3 miles per hour. The next slide will show the, the extreme speeds, or the speeds that are 10 miles an hour over the speed limit. You can see the differences in the profile. We have seen significant reductions in the extreme speeds between 2022 and 2024, 25. Collision comparisons. I just wanted to reemphasize, this is, this is a 200-day snapshot of, 200 days before the project was, was implemented, and 200 days after. It's a very short period of time for safety data. Typically, we analyze projects on three-year increments to, to, to generate any kind of trends with, with respect to safety. Traffic safety is not a linear thing. It happens sometimes on, you know, at, at random. So we like to take a longer horizon when we look at, when we look at traffic safety data. So that being said, with that, with those caveats, you can see that pre-pro, pre-project 200 days versus post-project 200 days, injury collisions, bike collisions, and total collisions have, shows significant reduction. We did have the one pedestrian fatality late last year. We have received that final report from the, from the Sheriff's Office. We will be reviewing that very carefully for any, for any steps that might be taken that need to be addressed on an engineering basis. Bicycle volumes was another measure that we, that we looked at. This was data collected on Hollister at Pine Avenue, Nectarine. You can see increases, so pre-project is orange, post-project blue, increases both in AM and PM, but a greater increase in the AM peak hour, as opposed to pedestrians in the next slide, which is the exact opposite. Increases in both the AM and PM, but more significant increases in the PM, presumably because more businesses are open later than, than earlier in the morning. So it, it stands to reason there would be more pedestrian activity in the evening. Level of service. So this is the last, last goal that we were referring to, traffic flow. This is a busy slide, but essentially, this is a screenshot, the, the upper portion 2022 and the lower portion 2024. It's a screenshot of the software that we use to analyze traffic signal performance. The, the graphs with the green, yellow, and, and red bars is the signal timing. So before, you can see, we had shorter green times for Hollister, that's the, the two, two and six phase, and longer green times for two and six in the 2024, 2025. The drop in level service was from a B in 2022 to a level service C in 2024, 25. This is in line with our projections for what we expected at this intersection. It's about, it, it adds up to about 10 seconds per vehicle in the peak hour of additional delay. Obviously, there are times in, on Hollister where the spillback from the construction going on at the roundabouts and, and at the bridge stretches all the way back to Pine and Nectarine, and so there can be additional delays associated with that, but this analysis is intended to analyze solely the project changes in the interim striping, and, and not the impacts of the adjacent construction. And just to revisit our, our project goal compliance, again, this is, for this snapshot in time, in a relatively short period of time, we currently are checking all the boxes. We have increased parking spaces and availability. We do have, we do want to watch the ongoing occupancy of the parking spaces, because we have provided so many parking spaces, and they're currently being underutilized. We have shown reductions in overall traffic speeds, as well as extreme speeds, which is really one of the more important aspects. We've seen a reduction in, in all types of collisions on, on Old Town Hollister. We've improved conditions for bikes and pedestrians with additional visibility markings, as well as shorter crossing distance for pedestrians. And we've been able to do all of these things while maintaining traffic flow on Old Town And with that, I'd like to transfer the, this portion to Shannon.
Great, thank you, Derek and Melissa. That slide is supposed to have a little bit more portions of the graph on it, so we're going to see if we can pull up, pull it up correctly. But, so, as previously mentioned and covered, there were some intended project goals, and so some of those were to increase the on-street parking availability and improve turnover, and also enhance the pedestrian and bike conditions, as previously mentioned. However, there were some concerns raised. So businesses, business owners expressed concerns about the constructed-related congestion, as well as changes in parking configurations may have impacted visitor activity. So one of the tools that we have to evaluate economic and financial performance is sales tax. So sales tax data can be used as a key indicator of, of trends for business health and consumer spending. However, there are some limitations to this. It doesn't always capture all of the taxable services. This is like healthcare, other professional services, and labor transactions. In addition, there's various economic factors that influence sales tax, including inflation, industry-specific trends, consumer behavior shifts, seasonal impacts, tourism activity, and local workforce dynamics, such as remote work. So in framing this economic trend analysis, I wanted to emphasize that this analysis does not pinpoint specific impacts of infrastructure changes. Instead, it provides a broader perspective on economic trends in Old Town in relation to citywide and statewide and countywide. So overall, Old Town Galita remains a significant economic hub. It generates around 23% of the citywide sales tax revenue in 2024, with autos and transportation sector accounting for just over half of it. So you can see from this, from the pie chart, 51% of the sales tax revenue in Old Town comes from just one sector, autos and transportation. So this is a very large portion of sales tax that Old Town is reliant on. So on the next slide, we do get into a little bit of the details of the major industries, which, so I'll cover later. So this chart, this bar chart on the left, shows that sales tax revenue has declined across all levels. So this is Old Town, citywide, citywide core, countywide, and statewide. And this is the change in sales tax from quarter three, which is the timeframe of July to September in 2023, when compared to quarter three of 2024. So this is the percentage change. So I, I did want to explain that citywide core is, excludes Old Town data. So this gives a, this offers a comparison between Old Town and the rest of the city, so it takes out Old Town data. But we do have citywide, which include, that's citywide, that includes all of the city. And then I also wanted to highlight that the orange bars is the adjusted economic data. So this means that the dollars that have been, the dollar amounts have been corrected to account for late payments or other adjustments to their appropriate quarter. So if there's a missed payment or a late payment that, let's say, we got in a later quarter, it's been reallocated to its correct quarter. So this does offer a more accurate reflection of actual sales tax performance within the timeframe that the sale actually happened. So that's why we included both. You can tell there wasn't too much of a difference for Old Town, but you can see that there are some changes when you look at a, a broader sample size, like citywide and statewide. So overall, consumers remain cautious with spending on nonessential goods and services. But specifically for Old Town, you'll see the, the kind of the chart on the right breaks down some of the major industry groups. And so Old Town overall experienced an 8.5% decline, which equals about $53,000 in sales tax revenue when comparing quarter three of 2024 to quarter three of 2023. So, and when adjusted for economic data. So, but this decline is driven by oil prices fluctuations, decline in new dealership sales, which is also a statewide trend, as well as a temporary gas, gas station closure. So, you know, as I mentioned, autos and transport account for over 50% of the sales tax revenue in Old Town, so this gas station closure, without this gas station closure, the decline would have been closer to about 5.3% if you average out and, and, you know, kind of accommodate, if you, if it wasn't closed. Or, so it's about a 5.3% decline, or which is equal to about $31,000. So in addition to the auto and transport sector, if you drill down to the subcategory of auto dealerships, they were down 10%. So this is a, a seventh consecutive quarterly decline, and this aligns with a statewide trend. So it's, Galita is not alone in that. And there's, there's several factors that contribute to this decline, including high interest rates, stricter credit, and rising auto insurance costs. Within autos and transport, there's another subcategory of auto supply stores, which actually saw an increase in sales, while, however, auto repair shops experienced a decline. So this is in the nuances a little bit, but it's kind of interesting, because it does depict consumer behavior, where it kind of, this may point to people going to supply stores to buying their own auto parts, oil, doing their own oil changes versus going to a repair shop and paying someone else to do it. I also wanted to highlight that repair shops, the labor at repair shops is not taxable. So it doesn't depict, you know, maybe the full economic activity that are happening at repair shops. It's only when there's a product involved at the repair shop. I also, so I wanted to highlight, I mean, you can see the, the red and the green arrows on the screen, but restaurants, hotels, food and drugs, building and construction all saw growth within Old Town, ranging from about 3% to 7%. While performances did vary within industries, for instance, some fast casual restaurants declined while others grew, and this just indicates a shifting in consumer preferences and behavior. So overall, sales tax trends in Old Town generally aligned with regional and statewide economic patterns. And I, I did want to highlight that there is more information in Attachment III of the staff report, which has additional tables and charts on sales tax information, including a detailed quarter three breakdown by major industry group that shows Old Town compared to citywide, citywide core, statewide, countywide. We also received some preliminary, preliminary quarter four data, just for city. We haven't, at the time of the report, we hadn't gotten the state and countywide quarter four data yet. And then we also included a historical trend chart that shows the sales tax revenue trends over the past eight years. But some key takeaways, so decline in the auto sales and fuel, fuel were the largest contributor to the overall decline of Old Town sales tax revenue, and there are broader economic factors, like interest rates, inflation, credit conditions, federal elections were also happening right before this, but right before quarter three. They all heavily influence spending trends. And, but despite these challenges, several industries showed resilience and growth, reflecting changing in consumer behavior and preferences. So in conclusion, the sales tax analysis highlights that a combination of factors influenced performance, and the data indicates that multiple economic factors also impacted Old Town sales tax performance, as experienced regionally and statewide. So that concludes the key economic observations, and I'll pass it back to Derek to wrap up.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now, with all of that data, I wanted to talk a little bit about next steps. Obviously, staff will continue to monitor traffic conditions. We'll also continue to meet with and work with concerned citizens, and we'll consider additional modifications to address these concerns, but we do want to make sure that we are remaining in alignment with our project goals. So we have made quite a few efforts with respect to safety, and want to make sure that we're balancing those other needs with, to make sure that we're supporting the original goal, which was to improve safety on the roadway. And then, obviously, we'll be back with a similar presentation to City Council at a future date. We can, we can have discussion about that time period, what that, what that should be. I would just remind council that the shorter time periods that we have, the less significant the data will be. So perhaps, and also, we need to take that into consideration with the changing stages of construction for the Project Connect, which has a huge impact on, on the performance of, of the interim striping project. But I'll, I'll leave that conversation for the, for the question and answer period. Thank you.
Well, I just want to thank staff for, for all your work on this report, and I know I think I may have been one of the ones, along with council, that said, let's have a check-in in six months, even knowing full well that it's not a very clear picture, so short, and period of time, and we need to look at it again. But I, I just wanted to make sure I thank you all for, for this presentation, I appreciate it. Councilmember Karyaco.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and also thank you, Madam Mayor, and those of us who, who wanted to have this, this check-in, because it's important that this be an ongoing conversation, an ongoing dialogue with everyone in our community, because this, this project really does affect all of our communities, whether you live in Old Town or work in Old Town or not. So just to kind of begin with a comment, you know, on the surface, it seems like the things that we wanted to go up, the number of pedestrians that use the area, the number of bicyclists that use the area, safety in the area have gone up. And the things that we wanted to have go down, the number of car crashes, the number of kind of just challenging situations caused by traffic have gone down. So I'm, I'm glad to see that, and I'm glad to see that because there's been so much, there's been so much narrative out there about how people feel about this project. And I, I think it's important that as a city, as much as possible, we make decisions that are driven by data, not just driven by how things make us feel. Not to discount feelings, feelings are important, and feelings sometimes drive behavior, right? If you don't feel safe somewhere, you, you won't go somewhere. So I, I do think there's a place, a place for feelings, but I also think there's a place for making sure the public knows what the real facts are. So just to begin with, can we talk a little bit about the angled parking and the utilization of that parking? So there was something in the staff report that compared how much parking utilization was happening on the north side of Hollister, where we made the change from backing into a parallel parking space to backing into an angled parking space as part of this project. So if I, if I understood correctly, it seems that the places that had the biggest increase in utilization were, were not just places like on Hollister and Orange, to Hollister and Magnolia on the south side, but it also seemed like there was a significant increase in utilization on the north side where the angled parking was. Is that correct? In other words, we added to the inventory, and we also added to the percentage of the spaces that were used.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Kiriakko, it's a mixed, mixed bag. In, in general, majority of the areas that increased in occupancy were on the south side. There is a small west of, of Nectarine. You also saw actually between Magnolia and Orange, you saw an increase in occupancy on the north side. But the majority of the north side, we saw a reduction in occupancy that outpaced what could be explained by the mere addition of parking spaces, if that makes sense.
So I'm, so I'm looking between Orange and Magnolia. I'm looking at the slide, not the slide, the Walker study.
Yes.
Where it went from 50% on the north side between Orange and Magnolia versus 2025, where it went from blue at 50, less than 50% to yellow between 70 and 80%.
Correct. Councilmember Kiriakko, it's between, between Orange and Magnolia, it went from less than 50% in 2012 to between 70 and 80%. Yes. And that is the one location in the north side where you saw that kind of increase. The rest of the locations, we saw decreases in occupancy, and we saw decreases, I want to make sure I'm saying this understandably, we saw decreases that couldn't just be explained by the amount of parking that we added. So, so there was fewer parking, fewer people parking there than pre-project.
Okay, I'll, I'll get up there in a minute, but I, I want to start here, because the Walker study was in 2012. So in 2012, we didn't have Old Town Coffee there. We didn't have Blue Blossom there. We didn't have the Lazy Eye Shop there. We didn't have Texture's Hair Salon. Some, there were some businesses that had been there the whole time, but there've been some, some newer businesses that have gone in, and those businesses, I would say, attract a different kind of customer than maybe would have hung out in Old Town in 2012. And I don't, I'm not asking you to agree with that. I guess I'm more asserting that. So I think there's something to be said for what, what you have kind of helps determine what, what you get. You also have the CrossFit Gym that went over there. A block away is Jonesy's that just went in. So I think when you have different mixes of different businesses, you can get different kinds of parking behavior. But moving up, you know, I'm, so let's go to Nectarine and Teca Lode. So Nectarine and Teca Lode, it's been a pretty significant, significant change, right? It was above 90% utilization in 2012, and now it's around, hovering around 50%. Is that fair?
Correct.
Now, in 2012, we didn't have a park, a public parking lot there though, correct?
That is correct.
And now we do with 16 spaces?
I believe it's 18.
18 spaces, excuse me. Okay. Is there any way for us to track utilization of the public parking space and make a determination if there was any impact there?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Kiriakko, we did look at parking occupancy of all of the lots, and it's, it's a little bit difficult to read in this graphic, but all of the lots were well under 50% utilized.
Okay. So, so that brings up an interesting point, and I'm, I really wanted to talk about this because I think it plays into your recommendation about signage. So we're hearing from people, and this gets back to feelings and the importance of, of listening to feelings and not just dismissing them because of data. If people aren't feeling like they want to back into a, a back-end angled parking space, you know, they, they were fine backing into a parallel space even if it was tight, but, you know, a back-end space for whatever reason doesn't work for them. If there's a, a public parking lot where you don't have to worry about that, you don't have to worry about another car driving by, you don't have to worry about a cyclist, you don't have to worry about a pedestrian, how do we know if it's just an issue of letting them know so they can walk the block versus the types of customers that we have in that area? Because the businesses that are in that area, I mean, you know, I go to Domingos, and I go to a lot of these places. The, the customers tend to be folks that have been regulars and have been going there for a tenure that can be measured in decades, not just years. And change is hard, and when they can't find a spot in the back parking lot there that serves Galita Bakery, or Domingos, or La Chappa Market, what they're telling the businesses, and what they're telling me is, well, if I can't find a spot, I'm not going to park in that stuff, so I just leave, and I just avoid the area now. Would they walk a block from the corner of Hollister and Pine in a, in a, in a public parking, parking lot, kind of like you have in solving and other places, right? You have a level, open lot, it's open to the public. Would they walk the block, or is the issue that they're not going to go there unless it's right next to them? And, and that's the challenge, right? So it kind of gets into, how much do we, how much can we do with education and communication and marketing versus if it's not just right there, are they going to shop there? You know, Old Town isn't State Street, it isn't downtown Santa Barbara. There's an expectation for people that shop down that they're going to do a little walking, they're going to park off-street in an off-street parking structure, and they're going to walk two, three, four blocks to go to two, you know, two or three different places to shop. And that's just not the dynamic in Old Town. The data shows that the number one businesses are auto and transportation, and what was the other one? Shannon, what was the other one? Is autos and transportation?
In 20, well, it was kind of mixed. Building construction was 11%, and restaurants and hotels were also 11% in 2024.
So the mix that we have right now, a lot of it is, is car-related and auto dealer-related. And so it's a different kind of customer. It's a different kind of visitor, right? And so one of the bigger long-term challenges for Old Town is about, as the Hispanic Chambers talked about, creating a downtown in Old Town that serves all of us, right? So part of what I think we're going through is sort of the growing pains of, of changing how things are configured to serve a new future intention. But still, number one thing has to be safety. So let me just continue with my safety questions. Do we have any information, do we have any information on where the changes that we've made? It may be too soon to tell, but I have to ask the question. We've gotten a lot of feedback about left turn conflicts. Staff has felt very strongly because Old Town, again, it's not like State Street. There's lots of driveways, both private, and then you also have public, and then you also have side streets, you know, Teca Lode, Rutherford, some of these other side streets. Are we seeing any evidence so far that holding the line on some of these places where you can't make a left turn like you used to is having a positive effect on safety, or is it just too soon to tell? Because I've heard that complaint a lot.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Kiriakko, it really is too soon to, to draw any conclusive conclusions. I will say that left turns are the source of the majority of conflicts in, in roadways, both on mid-block and at intersections. So we have focused quite heavily on those for this, for this project. And this goes back to striking that balance. And, you know, we're certainly open to discussing particular areas and examining those. We are, but at this point, with the initial positive information that we're getting, I'm not supportive of making broad sweeping changes that we know anecdotally and, and non-anecdotally reduce collisions, so.
The staff report talks about the bottleneck at Kellogg. Can you just talk a little bit more about why there's such a disconnect? Because there's so many people that I've talked to that are frustrated that they're having to wait in traffic at peak hours more than they feel they should have to. And the inclination is to back, you know, when they're traveling eastbound. The inclination seems to be to blame the fact that there's back-end angled parking, even though the back-end angled parking doesn't impact cars going east, it impacts cars going west. Can you talk a little bit about how going down to one lane at Kellogg and just a little bit to the west of Kellogg is causing that bottleneck? Because this is a, this is a behavior we've seen in Old Town going back to the 60s. It used to be a one-lane bridge in each direction over San Jose Creek. It used to be a one-lane bridge going over San Pedro Creek. And people were convinced that when Santa Bar, when Galita got rid of its angled parking, because we used to have angled parking, that that was going to get rid of the bottleneck. And they changed it, got rid of all the angled parking, upset the businesses at the time in the 60s, and then they still have the bottleneck, because Santa Barbara, it took them a while before they expanded the, the San Pedro Creek over crossing. So can you just talk a little bit about, about Kellogg?
Sure. Madam Mayor, Councilmember Kiriakko, it really has to do with, you're exactly right with your interpretation of what is causing the backup eastbound, and it is, it, it just is not the angled parking that would impact the westbound. And in general, with, you know, with, with some exceptions, but in general, westbound, especially in the evening, is, is by comparison, smooth sailing to, to the east direction. And that has to do primarily with the traffic conditions at the interchange, which is far different from anything that you see in Old Town. Pine and Nectarine has the highest cross-street traffic of any street by far, by orders of And the cross-traffic at the ramps, both the people that are trying to turn onto 217 and the people coming off 217, is higher than Pine and Nectarine by orders of magnitude. So the conflicting traffic, combined with the necessary reductions in lanes, you, you can't, you can't rebuild a bridge without, without necking down the road to two lanes. You can't build a roundabout in an existing intersection without causing some havoc. That's the reason for the backup. I will also say, and we've been trying very hard to stay on top of this, but with those temporary signals, there's been, there has been a lot of operation issues that we have been trying to address rapidly.
I've heard.
Yes. So, so that on top of everything else exacerbates the problem. And when, when we notice those things, we endeavor to get on that really quickly and correct that problem.
Okay, so with the signals, you're trying and you're learning?
Yes.
Okay. Just a couple more questions. We got a public comment from someone that's used to being able to make a left turn onto Hollister, off of Teca Lode, and now they have to go and use the side streets. And they had a couple of suggestions related to Kenman going westbound and Kellogg going eastbound. And they talked about trying to make it so that when you do the lane change, changes, so that it would allow for more throughput and it could run more efficiently. Can you talk, can you talk a little bit about why we have those two spaces configured the way they were? Because I believe it's about being able to keep the bus stops, and those are major bus stops at those spots, being able to keep them open at Hollister and Kellogg.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Kiriakko, yes, that, that was the primary consideration. The other, the other thing that has to do a little bit more with driver behavior, as soon as drivers who have been in a queue of, of traffic see it open up to two lanes, no matter how well we mark it for, say, a right-turn lane or something like that, people are going to try to jump that queue, and it actually creates more havoc and potentially some safety issues. But you're right, the original intention was for that bus lane to provide a space for the bus to be. But again, I, I think I'd, I'm happy to take a closer look at that and, and give you a more detailed response.
Yeah, I'd appreciate that, and I'd also appreciate it if we could make sure we have our motors units keeping an eye on Kellogg. One of the big things that I notice is that at the end of the workday, you have vehicles that are leaving the area where a lot of construction-related businesses are sighted on South Kellogg, and they're making the left turn onto Hollister to try and get out of Galita, because their workday is ending. And they're not, they're entering the intersection when they shouldn't, and then when they see the light change, they just go for it and make the left, and then they block it, and it takes like one or two cycles sometimes for that to kind of get cleared out, while at the same time, you have, also have people on South Kellogg trying to make the right turn on red, or right turn on green to get, to get out of there. And so you get some conflict. So maybe we can have our motors, I know that's not your department, but maybe we can have our motors take a look at that. Just one or two more things here. The report talked about the savings from doing the change order. And I, one of the things that I hear a lot is, well, why didn't you wait to do this until after Project Connect was done? Now, keep in mind, sorry, I'm going to make a statement before I ask the question, but there have been people waiting for bike lanes and people waiting for greater pedestrian safety, really going back since before we were a city, but definitely going back to meetings that happened in 2012. That led to a grant that we got in 2014. That led to the Complete Streets project, of which this is an interim striping implementation. So people have been waiting a long time for safety. And the early results seem to indicate that there's been significant safety improvement, almost half the collisions that we were getting before, almost half the car crashes. So if you're a driver, that's good. If you're a pedestrian, that's really good. If you're a bicyclist, that's really good. So my, my question is related to the money. If we had waited, if we had waited knowing that construction's going up like 10% every year for the last four years, if we had waited to 2027 and then not listened to people that probably would have said, hey, we've had construction fatigue, can you wait for a while and let the dust settle? If we had waited to 20, you know, waited to like 2028 or 2029 to do this, how much more would the project have cost than the $2 million at the value engineered cost or the $4 million that was quoted to us in 2023 without the value engineering cost? What, what? What would we be looking at for an interim project, not even like the final real project?
Councilmember Kiriakko, we ran some numbers using the $4 million with the original bid, the project on its own. And if you use the 10% escalation annually, it would have been about $7.1 million. And then using the $2 million for the project cost that we did through the change order and you run those escalation costs, it's approximately $5 million.
It's a lot of money. Thank you. Last question. And this goes back to the commenter that used to make a left turn on Tackalote. Before the project, I went and took some video of people trying to make left turns at Tackalote and saw a few near crashes. And those near crashes were caused primarily by two things. Speeding of cars on Hollister because they were going really fast. And visibility. Can you talk a little bit about what the visibility change is for drivers? Whether they're trying to make a left in a place where making a left is allowed or making a right onto Hollister where making, you know, because making a right's always allowed? What's the difference in sight distance? And what does that mean to a driver in terms of their safety if they're trying to get out of the north of Hollister Old Town neighborhood, for example?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Kiriakko. Before this project, there were intersections such as Magnolia that had no sight distance provided. I mean, you could park right up next to the curb return at that location. So from zero sight distance to now, on average, I would say you're 35 feet of red curb, plus or minus, maybe up to 50 in some locations, which provides, our goal was to provide sight distance, stopping sight distance for 25 miles per hour. So with the combination of the reduced speeds and that increased sight distance, it just, it makes, it takes the guesswork out of a lot of those turning movements. And because of that, should improve safety. I would also say that an additional benefit of the green conflict striping in the bike lanes is it almost provides an additional visual cue to the side-street driver that they can actually inch up beyond the original stop bar, once it's safe to do so, and have sort of a secondary stop bar from which to view oncoming traffic, which is sort of an added unintended benefit. But I have seen that occur. And it just gives more reassurance to the driver that they're able to inch out without being in traffic. They have more of a visual cue to do that. And it actually adds more sight distance to the.
So we went from a scenario where there was really no red curb or minimal red curb, minimal sight distance, which made it really unsafe to turn and get onto Hollister because people were so desperate to park. And we actually solved that problem and at the same time added 19 parking spaces on the north side.
That's correct. I would like to also mention one other thing. The decisions that we made about restricting left turns, those were not done willy-nilly, for lack of a better technical term. But we looked for locations where we could do that while impacting the fewest drivers possible. So Pine and Nectarine, obviously, being a signalized intersection, having, like I said, orders of magnitude, more turning movements than anywhere else. Whereas, say, a location like Tackalote, by comparison, I realize if you're one of those few people, it's an impact to you. But looking at an overall corridor, you know, with left turns in the teens, you know, we're looking at overall benefits to the traveling public versus small inconveniences.
Thank you. I've gone on long enough and I know there's a lot of other folks with questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. The report mentions the increase in traffic to the side-streets. For the information we have today, for the collision information, the collision information we have is for the Hollister Avenue stretch? Is that correct?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Smith. We have data available for citywide. We have only analyzed for the purposes of this report Hollister corridor.
I think for future analysis, it'd be interesting to know, right, like if you reduced, if it ended up that you reduced collisions on Hollister but increased collisions in the neighborhood, right, then it might be a wash. So I think it might be helpful to have just some of that greater neighborhood information, just to kind of have the big picture there. And then the other question I had was, could staff, I know in response to feedback that staff received, there were some adjustments. And I know that there's a lot, but are there some highlights that you could share?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Smith. There were several changes that were made after the initial implementation, which was in July. And I believe the modifications occurred around September. Those include the addition of a few more angled parking spaces on the north side. I believe a total of three on the north side. And then we also did some marking of individual spaces on the south side between Rutherford and the Galita Valley Community Center, just to make sure. There was about seven spaces there that if you parked incorrectly, you could create some inefficiencies. So we wanted to make sure that we set those out, defined the limits of those spaces. We also worked with, we were notified by the school district, who operates the buses out of the Galita Valley Community Center, that they were having trouble with some of their access in and out with the buses. So we created some keep-clear zones for their turning movements and also made some modifications to the median to allow left turns for school buses out of the Galita Valley Community Center. Those are the major ones that I can think of at this point.
Great, thank you. I think it's so important to have that level of responsiveness to the community. And then the other question I had was about various signal timing and any tweaks and adjustments that have been made. In looking at that, have adjustments also? I understand that there's been some tweaks along the way. I didn't know if there'd been any changes at Fairview and Hollister at any of the peak times or if that's been looked at yet.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Smith. Yes, actually, we have, we received some feedback from the Sheriff's Department, actually, on the operation of the signal there and had made some minor timing tweaks there. There was some concern about the clearance time for one of the left turns through the intersection, some situations where people were still in the intersection when opposing traffic got a green. And so we reviewed that information from the Sheriff's Department and made the according changes to the signal timing. Received feedback from the Sheriff's Office that it addressed the issue.
Thank you. And then to the extent that we still also have impacts from the bridge project and the roundabouts, do we have a sense of timing of those projects? I know there's, you know, always potential for change, but any estimates at this point?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Smith. I know there are multiple phases of construction. I believe we are in Phase 1B at this point. And there are three-plus phases. So each one will have its own nuances associated with it. The good news is some of the upcoming phases, we have proactively taken a review of all of the upcoming phases and tried to forecast some of the problems that could occur and have asked for modifications here and there. So we've tried to be proactive in that standpoint. One of the good things about future phases, I don't believe the very next phase, but the following phase, is that the traffic signals actually go away and you start to get quasi-roundabout operation, temporary roundabout operation. So there will be greater flow in the interchange in the upcoming phases. As far as the exact timing of those phases, I don't know if.
Councilmember Smith, I'll step in here. So in order to meet our bridge schedule, we need to be in the creek about May 15th through June 15th to start the work in the bridge. So we're working with a contractor on an expedited schedule due to utility relocations. So we're looking to accelerate their construction so they can start the roundabout construction so we can move the traffic over to get the southern portion of the bridge built. So we're planning for that this summer, hopefully May, but it all depends on the accelerated work.
Great, thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Reyes, my team.
Thank you. Well, a lot of really thoughtful questions have already been asked. I've been checking off a lot of the questions that I had. So I appreciate my council members for, fellow council members for having really good questions. So I have just a couple of initial comments. And then I would really want to hear from the rest of council and of course, from public comment. But, you know, I think we've had these last, you know, several months hearing a lot of input from the community. And I really want to acknowledge that, at least from my perspective and the feedback that I've gotten directly from the public, it continues to be a pretty diverse range of opinions and thoughts and input. It may, the perception may be that it's mostly negative because I think, you know, I read Nextdoor and read articles and there's a lot of, at least on that, you know, part of the public discourse, a lot of folks who have very negative concerns. But I will tell you, I also hear from quite a lot of residents, Galita residents, Old Town residents, who have very positive things to say about the project. They acknowledge it took some getting used to, but they acknowledge that they see and they have themselves walked more in Old Town, felt more comfortable going on a bike. I've heard from parents who feel more comfortable having their kids or teenagers, you know, kind of walking around. So that's all really important feedback to hear, too. They may not always, you know, come and give public comment or email us, but I do hear that when I'm out in the community. And I also want to acknowledge that there does continue to be folks who have pain points. And that's really valid. And it's important for the council to hear that and be open to addressing, you know, to the extent possible, keeping in mind, you know, the project goals that we have. You know, how can we make adjustments? So I do remain open and open-minded to making adjustments. I think for me, safety is still the, kind of my number one project goal with this. So I am open to like, what are things that we can compromise on or have a balanced approach to that still achieve some of those safety goals? So I did just want to get that out. I also have heard from a lot of folks who are going to Old Town for the first time. So I think we hear both folks who are, you know, saying, I don't go to Old Town anymore. And I'm also hearing from folks who are saying they're going for the first time or going more often than they used to before. So it is a range. I do want to also say that, you know, I think there's some more that we could do as a city to what I see as a little bit of low-hanging fruit to address some things. I heard and asked a lot of questions of folks in anticipation of tonight's meeting about the public parking. I do think that despite all our great efforts, folks still don't know about the public parking lots or not enough people know about the public parking lots. I know we have some signage there. For whatever reason, folks don't see it. So maybe there's a way that we can have signage that's more high visibility, maybe designed in a way that's eye-catching that you see in other cities, you know, like the Carson Lot and even the Community West Bank Lot, which I thought most people knew about. There's still folks who don't know about it and drive right by, you know, that white and green parking sign. So I feel like that's something that could help with their. I guess another thing that is a little bit of a question related to the community center. I've been so happy to see so many events happening at the community center. We definitely have a lot of people, groups that are renting out space, sometimes with really large, you know, groups of people. And I've started to try to notice, like, when they bring in food, where it's coming from. So one of the questions I had was, and I don't know if we have any staff who could address this today, but when someone rents space at the community center, do we provide them a list of like local vendors or local Old Town businesses? And we probably can't require them, but highly encourage them to use those local vendors? I feel like that's kind of an easy thing to do. You know, I attended an event there that had like 200 or 300 people and they were bringing coffee and like other snacks, but from like Santa Barbara or other places. And I, you know, was kicking myself there that like I was hoping they could, you know, get coffee or food somewhere locally. So that feels like an easy kind of thing to do. And then, of course, for city events, and we've talked about that before. But any of our city events, kind of using local vendors, Old Town vendors. I know we have, there's a couple of the Meet Me in Old Town events coming up. And I'd really like to encourage more incorporation of Old Town businesses to benefit from events like that, whether that's having, you know, space there or some other kind of incentive to get the Old Town businesses to benefit from that. So I don't know if anyone has an answer to that community center question.
Yeah, I'm not aware that we give out recommended lists or just available lists, but I'm sure we could point people in the direction of saying, you have a number of local vendors. We encourage you to look them up. I know a lot of times for those events, though, people are very particular about who they want to use. So that might be part of it. But yeah, we can certainly encourage them to use local vendors.
I think we could do more than encourage them. Maybe there's some way to make it more, you know, like, tell them why it's important or, you know, I'll leave it to staff to think that through. But I feel like that's an area of opportunity.
I think we could certainly strongly encourage and make it easier. I don't think we can condition them to use, obviously, specific vendors. But I think to your point, making it easier, I think, could help.
Okay, thank you. And I'll save, you know, any other comments after a public comment.
Those are great suggestions. I like that. Councilmember Mayor, Portem Casden.
Thank you. So first, I guess I just want to reiterate how interim this kind of thing is, the report that we're getting, you know, and caution against drawing too many conclusions from it. Just it's important for people to recognize that we're getting the combined effects of the roundabout, the bridge and the lane restriping. And so it's to tease apart which is the cause of congestion at any particular time. It's hard to determine. I don't know if you want to add to that or, but I just think it's really important that people recognize that this is not the final stage and what we see in a year or two is going to be different.
Mayor Portem Casden, yeah, happy to reemphasize what you just said. Again, this is a, the data that we're able to collect, I mean, we're not collecting data on an ongoing basis. So these are snapshots in time. There's fluctuations on a daily, weekly, monthly, special event basis, all of which can create different conditions, both in the construction project, which is the Project Connect project, and the restriping project, which is already completed. I would also like to reiterate that just because this data, this snapshot data says one thing, doesn't mean that anyone else's observations who lives and works there is wrong. All of this information needs to be collected and addressed.
My point is different than that, that not disputing, let's say, somebody might say at 5 o'clock, there's a lot of cars, there's a lot of congestion, and the level of service is really impacted. But the source of that problem is harder to identify when we have not just the lane restriping going on, but we also have the roundabout, we also have the bridge, all of those going on concurrently. We can't distinguish what is the source of the problem. And until those are done, we're not going to be able to say this is the cause.
Yes, in general, I agree with that statement.
And let me, along those other, those lines also, you had mentioned that there's a reduction. You anticipated a 15% reduction in the overall traffic on, on Hollister. Is some of that invariably one hits nowadays, a ton of congestion on 101? And I assume that some of those people you're thinking would be diverting themselves from just passing through on Hollister, would have gone to 101. And now, given all the congestion, would maybe not do that.
Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem Kasdan, I can only, I can only share that, that is a logical conclusion. Whether the data, we haven't gone to that level of data analysis to bear that out. But, but yes, as one of the major, the major parallel route to Old Town is the US 101. And that is, would be the alternate route, correct?
Right. And if one was just going a short, relatively short distance beyond, let's say, the Old Town area, it's not worth it, you're going to hit traffic anyway on 101 now. Okay, just a couple more things. The, well, that, when it comes to some of these things, like the back end parking, here's, the question is this, is that my experience and actually looking at Cathedral Oaks, that on Cathedral Oaks, we added back end parking too. And the difference is, there's not a lot of traffic. And so sometimes when people are less familiar with it, when you're backing in on Cathedral Oaks, you know, somebody might miss the first time and be over on the line or something like that. But there's no stress involved, you're not backing up cars and so forth. And I guess I'm wondering how much the additional traffic that's going on now is impacting the experience, the back end parking experience and making it, you know, more challenging, more stressful, more uncomfortable. And that if we get to that, that glorious day when, you know, the roundabout is done and the, the bridge is done, might we see, is it reasonable to think we might see different, a different experience in terms of the back end parking? Or is that not a reasonable?
Councilmember Kasdan, I, for certain, the, the difference between say Cathedral Oaks and downtown, Old Town Hollister is the amount of through, through traffic that's occurring adjacent to this, to the angled parking. The more, the less aggressive or confident driver or slash parker is gonna, their level of comfort is not going to be there to, to engage in that, especially during busy traffic times. So there are just some people who just won't have the, won't have the tolerance for that, at that, at that, in those conditions. That being said, in other, you know, in lower volume periods possibly could. The other thing that I would be interested in, in engaging is a little more education on how to communicate with drivers about your intentions to park. Because a lot of that has to do with the, the expectation of the driver behind you and the communication of the driver in front that they're intending to park. This, this is the same type of communication that people in more urban environments do to parallel park. Use of their turn signals, use of their hazards, pulling over to the side, all of which communicates something to the driver behind you rather than, rather than just stopping in the lane and then people honking and those types of things. In addition, when there's, when there's several spaces open, angled spaces open, there is, there's still the, maybe people are not comfortable with this, but there's still the ability to pull into those spaces and maneuver within the parking area itself. So there's lots of flexibility there. As far as, as conditions change on Hollister, do I think that people could get more comfortable with the angled parking? Yes, but that requires a lot of, there's a, there's a lot of permutations of what could happen between now and then. And so it's, it's difficult to forecast driver behavior from that standpoint.
We got a comment from somebody who was suggesting that we move the bike lane to near the curb and to have, instead of the back end parking, have parking that you drove straight in. And I think one of the responses that I saw from you guys was it would be a challenge with the curb that we have, that the curb doesn't fit. But my recollection is that we, when we were talking pre pandemic, when we were first talking about this project, we were actually talking, if I remember right, about replacing or fixing the curbs also that, because I think it was, because they're so old, I think there were ADA challenges to it. And I guess this is something down the road. This is something, you know, as we look forward. But is that something if we, is, if we were actually thinking about maybe fixing the curbs also, is that a reasonable thing to think about? Having bike lane near the curb and then pull in or front end parking?
Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem Kasdan, I think we just, yeah, we've discussed a number of different configurations, both head in parking as well as the bike lane between the curb and the, and, and parallel parking or even angled parking, similar to what's happened on, on Cathedral Oaks. The data shows that head in angled parking with a, with bike lanes behind you, as well as with heavy traffic behind you is less, is, you're more likely to create collisions than with the back end parking. I know that people that are uncomfortable with back in parking would disagree with that. But, but the overall data suggests that, that head in, back out parking is less safe than, than back in.
Is that, you're saying, is that also true? You're, you're also uncomfortable with it if the bike lane were adjacent to the curb? And so you, there weren't bikes behind you?
The bike lane adjacent to the curb is a different, a different situation. Not so much in conflict with parked vehicles. But what happens then is the parked vehicles become a sight distance obstruction between the bikes and the vehicles turning into the multiple driveways you have on, on Old Town Hollister. That concept works well when you have very few driveways. But when you have a driveway every, you know, several, every hundred feet or so in some areas, those conflict points require the, the sight distance, the inter, inter visibility between pedestrian, or between the bikes and the cars on Hollister, that it would render most of the parking needing to be restricted. So, so that's the challenge with, with that concept.
Okay, just two quick questions or one question, one comment. The other question is, have you considered, have we had any discussions about if there are any particular measures? My experience is that the congestion in Old Town is only on this relatively sort of narrow range in time, that is. That it's not really bad in midday and so forth, but sort of as we get closer to after work and eveningish, that's when it picks up. Are there any measures that you guys have talked about to have some sort of different requirements or different standards during the, call it rush hour, as opposed to other times that would help circulation? Does that make sense in any way?
Yes, Councilmember Kasdan, yes. And we have looked at, the timing that we set up for the, for the interchange essentially allows for additional, when there's, when there's additional traffic at the intersection, it allows for the extension of green time at the intersection. So it, it can be dynamic with, with traffic. However, the problem occurs in those problem times is when there's heavy traffic on the off ramp or, and/or getting on the on ramp and on the main line of Hollister. And those occur primarily in the evening PM peak hours. The challenge there is you give more time to one direction, the other side experiences a delay. You try to, you try to keep, keep one side from backing up. The other side backs up, for example, onto the 217. So there just comes a point where the volume is so heavy in both directions that you can't time your way out of it. So that's the real challenge there. And so when you have a fixed number of lanes that you can have, you can't add more lanes because there's not the space, because we're, we're constructing. And the more time you add to one side takes away from the other side. So we try to find that balance as well as we can. But, you know, the, the hand that we're dealt is, there's, there's not much to work with at this point.
Okay, one last for Shannon. Yeah. But it's more, I guess, I don't know. Anyway, here's what I was thinking. We just had the, the presentation from MTD about their wave program, which is those micro transit units. And it's, I gather, coming in April, they said. And so what I'm wondering is if, like, for people from IV, students, when they want to go out, very often it's to Santa Barbara or, or maybe, you know, other areas. But it isn't necessarily to Old Town. You know, it's not as convenient, it's not as, just as simple. And I wonder if we could explore with the MTD, some, some version of a shuttle from that area to Old Town to get more people, you know, maybe it's just if you, you know, build the transit, they will come. And if it's easy, I don't know if it would have to go later at night than they're used to doing or the frequency, what it would take. But if there was some way, some sort of shuttle sort of thing, and especially the micro transit thing, you could go out drinking and not have to worry about driving home at night. You know, I mean, there's so many attractive aspects and it really might be something worth exploring. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to be really brief because I know the public has something to say and I'm interested in hearing all of you, but I, I will just make a couple quick comments. Councilmember Reyes Martin, I thought you brought up some really good points about the parking, the public parking. I've never been able to understand why, because that's where I park when I'm there. I will be honest, it took me a while to get to the back end parking and I only did it when there was not very many people around and there was no traffic. So I, I can understand, I can understand people hesitating on that one. But, so I usually use the parking, the public parking. And I'm just wondering if a sign that said, I don't know, free public parking, I don't know, would that make a difference? I'm not sure. But most of the parking is on the western end, you know, so maybe we could look at something more towards the eastern end. But I, I don't know if that would help. If you're going to be looking at the signs, maybe I would add the word free. I'm wondering, and I haven't heard lately about this complaint, but, and I think I've mentioned it, about the, the traffic signal at Fairview. When you have the pedestrian activated signal at Orange, they're not talking, they're not talking to each other. So if you have a lot of traffic, say during peak hour and you, the people that are going, that are in Fairview and turning left onto Hollister going east, they can get stuck in the intersection because of that signal. And I'm wondering if, have we looked at that? Is that still creating a problem or have people figured out? And I know that there's also been folks that have contacted me complaining about the signal at, the traffic signal at, in front of the community center that backs up things. Is there anything that can be done about that or is that?
Madam Mayor, the, the divide, or the crossing flashing beacon at Orange is not coordinated with, with Fairview, nor is the, the beacon near the community center with Kenman or Kellogg. I could see where in unique circumstances at the, if someone pushes at the wrong time, there could be that, that issue. This, this again goes back to the balance because you're talking about accommodation of pedestrian crossings during busy times. And pedestrian delay versus on demand delay for, or on demand access for pedestrians during busy times versus driver convenience and traffic flow. So it's a tough thing. I would, I would be interested in the feedback, how often that, that situation occurs? If it's a, if it's an occasional thing? In, in my mind, the, the accommodation of the pedestrian would, would rule there. But if it's creating a serious traffic jam issue separate from the Project Connect, it's something that we could, we should look at.
All right, thank you. Those are my questions for now, but I, I would like to go to public comment.
Yes, everyone on the Zoom webinar who wishes to speak to this item, please use the raised hand icon and I will call on you. I do have seven in-person speaker slips. Ethan Woodall will be our first speaker.
First off, I'd just like to highlight that the gentleman Ricardo Hernandez on December 24th was one of two pedestrians stuck. And that was the first pedestrian we'd had hit on Hollister quarter or in over 10 plus, probably 13 years, I believe. I just want to put a name to the face. We just kind of glossed a little bit on it. I do want to say though, in, with this project, we just need more time. As I've said before, it's an experiment that we have right now where we have two variables. We have a roundabout and we have freeway work going on. So you really can't hold an ethical experiment that generates you any quality measurable data when you have two variables. That's basically in the scientific method and established fact. Councilwoman Smith, I do, Councilperson, I, we're putting pressure on the neighborhood streets. I can tell you when I wanted to go to do a few things, I found myself doing exactly that. I'm sneaking in behind LCTO and I'm rolling through the streets because it's the easiest way for me to go. You know, and we're all going to have to deal with that. And with those streets, there's a lot more instances for pedestrians, cyclists, a lot of other people to get hurt. And that data has really germane to the case. Also, road diets are still up for debate. You had a 0.8 mile stretch on Venice Boulevard and had 21 businesses closed in two years in the Mar Vista neighborhood. So we're looking at a lot of these experiments with complete streets and a lot of things that, you know, things are still up in the, up in the air. Positive data is promising, but it just, this is going to take a long time. We have, we need a lot and just, I don't want everybody to look at this data and be like, oh yay, great, it's awesome. Okay, it just needs a lot more. And some of the parking, I feel like we're shuffling deck chairs.